Okay. Great, call to me in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Led.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is invocation and Pastor Hutchinson is delayed by a train on the tracks that we all know so well, so he's gonna be unable to join us this evening. So, City Administrator Lexa Barton is gonna lead us in that and we follow by the Pledge of Allegiance for Alderman Headley.
Lord, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in matters at hand and ask that you would show clarity in our word with a spirit of joy and obedience. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
Yes, we have one change this evening there.
Uh, for proclamations, we have two proclamations on there. The one for Shannon Larkin needs to be moved to August 25th when she will be able to attend.
Okay. I want to hear, can you motion to amend the agenda then to remove Officer Larkin's proclamation and place it back on August 25th?
Remove.
Motion Alderman Johnston, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, agenda is amended. Next item then is proclamation for Daniel Ims. We have City of Grand Valley versus the Grand Valley School District Basketball Challenge.
Whereas Officer Daniel Ims has been a member of the Grand Valley Police Department since November 2013, and whereas in 2013, the Grand Valley Police Department with the assistance of the Grand Valley School District, added an additional school resource officer for the purpose of collaborating onsite with school administration and staff to investigate crime on school property, incorporate law-related education and safety into the school curriculum, and enhance communication through the school setting. And whereas during Officer Ims' first year as school resource officer, he has distinguished himself by initiating the organization of a City of Grand Valley versus Grand Valley School District Basketball Challenge to raise funds for the school resource officer program. And whereas the money raised in the basketball challenge goes directly towards school resource officer programs within the school as well as to aid in counseling services for students in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Grand Valley Board of Aldermen and I'm Mayor Mike Todd acknowledged the dedicated service and commitment of Daniel, Officer Daniel Ims in making Grand Valley schools safer and more enjoyable for our community children. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 11th day of August 2014 in the City of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Okay, next item is citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens to forward to the podium and microphone and address the board and please give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Mr. Totten, if you have to remind her, it doesn't count.
This is important because you guys, um, September the 5th, red bright, at six o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock in the morning, there's gonna be some little old lady you all know over at McDonald's trying to help them raise money by selling their flyer, uh, banner things for the Chiefs. Now, come on guys, put this on your calendars, we gotta get up. And if I gotta be up there by 5:45, you guys at least can come and get coffee and get us a, a little, uh, banner. I already know one gentleman that won't make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to address the board this evening? Alright, seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion from Alderman Scully to accept the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman West, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing no presentations, move on to discussion. Update on traditional use permit racetrack recreation area. Nobody's had a work session involving that, I don't know if there's anything to report other than that.
Um, I think this for the record, it'd be good since this is your regular meeting for, um, City Attorney Gary, go ahead and give an update of the city documents that we should.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, just to inform the board, I think most of you know, um, but Impact Motorsports, DBA Valley Speedway, and Dennis and Connie Shroud, um, did file a lawsuit. Uh, this lawsuit was filed, um, last Friday, and I think most of us, um, it was served today. Um, so, um, we'll be dealing with that lawsuit and, um, just wanted to inform the board that, uh, that lawsuit has been filed.
Alright. Do we have any questions? Alright, move on then, seeing no new business. Move on to pre- previous business, which was the building permit fee waiver.
Just before we hit the ball, um, I know we talked about the last meeting to look at and consider waiving a, um, community permit for, uh, the armed officers, uh, due to, um, there's a certain amount of information that, uh, anyone aware of, that, uh, the line actually is not going to go up. Um, based upon that request, City Attorney Gary did, uh, do some, they did some research and, uh, found that, uh, it would not be a possibility. And, um, do you have any additional questions at this time? Um, Mr. Gary might be able to answer this question.
You want to have any additional questions? Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Nothing other than what I've already provided.
Just for the record, basically the finding was that it's illegal for us to do that?
Well, uh, basically that when you're doing any, any sort of fees or waivers of anything, then it has to be uniform and that there can't be special exceptions.
So, if we were to defer them, anybody could come back and ask for their BB waiver?
That's, that's correct.
Alright, okay. If anyone has any other questions, this will move on to ordinances.
This is Bill B. 14 dash 15, um, the second read, um, which will become ordinance 2336 and ordinance amending chapter, oh wait, I'm sorry. No. This is the one that we did the first read of last time. Here, yeah, this is Bill B. 14 dash 13, um, this will be the second read, which will be ordinance 2336 and ordinance amending chapter 215 offenses, Article 13, general principles of liability, adding section 215 point 680, possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property prohibited.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 14 13 for its second reading and make it ordinance 2336.
I have motion from Alderman Arnold to accept Bill B. 14 dash 13 for its second reading, making ordinance 2336. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman West, any discussion?
I wonder if this is, uh, this, this doesn't include like if you rent the building or the community center? We, I, we had a few questions about that at the last reading on this, but as long as you rent the community center, you can have open containers and stuff like that, correct?
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct. And also there has been a slight change, um, from, uh, the ordinance that was at your last meeting, um, in subsection A, um, it has been deleted. Um, the last sentence of subsection A was deleted, um, which states this section includes occupants and drivers of vehicles on the public streets. Um, so this, um, this ordinance will only apply, will not apply to motor vehicles, um, or passengers, um, on, on the public streets. And that issue has been, will be addressed in the next ordinance. And that's, the chief and I had talked about that, so.
And I appreciate Matt's work on that and he kinda gave me some direction on that and I absolutely agree that we should, we should separate those out. So, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Do we have any additional questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Arnold.
Yes.
Alderman Johnston.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. This is Bill B. 14 dash 15 and ordinance amending chapter 342 alcohol-related traffic offenses, adding section 342 point 100, consumption of alcoholic beverages and moving motor vehicle prohibited. Section 342 point 110, transportation and motor vehicle prohibited. Section 342 point 120, exception vehicle for hire. Section 342 point 130, exception living quarters of a recreational motor vehicle and section 342 point 140 penalty.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill 14 15 for its first read and bring it back for a second read by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Arnold to approve Bill B. 14 dash 15 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Headley? We'll go Headley on that one. Any discussion?
The only discussion I had on it is that I didn't see the need to do two reads in one night. I know it was part of the previous bill, that, uh, would there be a problem if we do this as normal and do it two nights, two separate nights?
I was just trying to keep all the uniforms on the night delivered, meant to, the officer's calling one shot. We should send orders.
Didn't see an urgency to, to move it faster, so I tried to stay within the process of doing double reads in the same, on a bill in the same night.
Does anyone have a motion to remove that? Then we do, we probably do it after we go on the first time, do we? Or do it now?
No, I don't see, 'cause you kind of watch them on the floor to reverse the read.
Do that, and if someone wants to remove it, they can remove it after we, okay. Uh, any other discussion on about B. 14 dash 15 for its first reading? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to table second reading till our next meeting.
I have motion from Alderman Arnold to remove Bill B. 14 dash 15 from tonight's agenda, placing it on the next agenda for a second reading. Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Johnston. Any discussion on a motion to remove it tonight? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Uh, six zero, Mayor. This is Bill B. 14 dash 16, uh, for the first read and ordinance amending chapter 382 vehicle weight, size and load limits. Section 382 point 030 weight regulations, commercial vehicles over five tons prohibited.
I move that we accept Bill number B. 14 dash 16 for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Scully to approve Bill B. 14 dash 16 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, could we, uh, beginning of the meeting, we had a few questions over this. Could we have Ryan go over why we're doing this to maybe help some, answer some questions that we've been asked?
Yeah, this is, uh, an existing ordinance that we're amending. Uh, after we finished the interchange project, uh, commercial traffic, truck traffic that was get, trying to go to the industrial parks, uh, rather than, than taking the New McCary and taking the loop down to Jefferson, uh, began to cut through Woodbury Drive. With that, we've seen an increase in repairs and road damage. We've had several significant failures along that road. So, uh, with the, uh, fact that we had the increased repairs, we were also getting complaints from citizens that there was more truck traffic, uh, and some of the speeds as well of the truck traffic, people were driving back and forth pretty quick. At the end of June, we put, uh, some traffic counters out there, helped us identify how fast they were going, the classification of trucks that are going up and down there. And, uh, from the test period, we found that on average, there was about 20 semi-trailers per day traveling up and down that road going back to the industrial park. So, for that reason, um, it's our recommendation that we add this road, uh, to the schedule of roads that truck traffic over five tons is not permitted. Speeding? Yeah, we, we had, uh, 35 mile per hour was the 85th percentile speed, so, uh, quite a few people were exceeding the speed limit over 10 miles per hour.
Do you want to talk to any of the truck drivers to ask why they're not using the other roads instead of Woodbury?
No, I, I think just with the, the jog in the road, it's probably more inconvenient. They see that as a straight shot, uh, back to that industrial area. But we haven't, I mean, we really didn't have any, any mechanism to stop the, the trucks. They weren't violating any laws, so we, you know, didn't send the police out to, to stop them. But just looking at the, the route up there, it is a quicker in and out, but that road's not designed for commercial traffic.
I know we had an issue not long ago on RDMI's and I know you actually talked to the, uh, company on those 18-wheelers and, and I think that was resolved satisfactorily. If I recall, I think you brought it up, didn't you?
Yeah, it had stopped them.
It didn't stop it. So, are they still traveling on RDMI?
Probably not as much now, since we put that turn where you gotta stop and turn. But, uh, they still traveling.
I believe one of the main concerns is how it was gonna affect the local services that travel up and down through there.
Okay.
Which it doesn't affect them.
No, I mean, it, the local delivery trucks are exempt from from the prohibition of traffic on there. So, if it's somebody that's, you know, doing business on Woodbury, UPS, FedEx, that sort of stuff.
Trash trucks.
Yeah, trash trucks, that will not impact them.
How would they know that running Woodbury down to Jefferson isn't, isn't still the local delivery?
You know, the, the best we can do is if we have, you know, chronic offenders, I mean, if it becomes an issue, then we can.
And it's just, and when you say local delivery, they're still delivering right off that street versus going the other way off that street. I don't know if, if that really covers it. But don't they use?
Maybe I don't understand the question.
Well, what, right now, they can go Jefferson to, I mean, Jefferson, they're not the street there. If it's not Jefferson, they're turning through that and way in those, those divisions, but they're going off Woodbury and turning into the same place.
Mm-hmm.
How do they know that that's not local delivery? Just because it's not on Woodbury?
Well, the, the, the point is that Woodbury cannot be used as an access for anything else for commercial traffic. If you're.
I understand that, but we were agreeing the ordinance, we're saying except for local delivery.
Along Woodbury.
It's a little vague, doesn't it? It's, it's pretty ambiguous when they're going up to Woodbury and they're turning onto the street that they're, you know, they're just accessing the street they're delivering on. I don't know that that covers it.
But don't your signs just say no truck traffic over five tons?
Except for local delivery.
Yeah, except for local delivery.
And they don't say local on the sign, it does, doesn't it? It says except for local delivery, so they're delivering locally. Um, I think it's pretty ambiguous, I think you'd have a tough time, Matt? Would you have a tough time enforcing that ticket?
I'm trying to look at this ordinance right now to see what it says. I mean, I think it's gonna depend upon, um, you know, if they're, if they're not serving, um, I guess from Woodbury Drive, um, from Valley Ridge Drive to BB Highway, if they're not stopping in between those two highways, um, or, then it's not gonna be a local delivery under this ordinance. So, if they're outside of that area, um, then it will not be a local delivery. And I would, I would have to look at a map to see exactly where it is.
If Woodbury goes down and it turns to the street, which I'm, I'm not familiar with the name of that street.
Valley Ridge.
Valley Ridge.
Yeah.
Turns to Valley Ridge and Valley Ridge is, is all the businesses are accessed, it's all industrial.
Should we just say resident, I mean, can you put residential?
Well, I have.
Is the way of solving it?
In the.
Residential deliveries only?
The opening section of the ordinance, it says.
Well, I think he's more worried about the sign, right? Well, I'm, I'm worried about how people understand it. I mean, if I'm, if I'm in a truck and I go down this road, and this road is, is the direct link to the street I'm delivering on, to me, that's local delivery.
Uh, the way the ordinance reads it, they're gonna, you're gonna have to be in between those two streets for it to be local delivery, because that's where the truck traffic's being prohibited, is in between those two streets. And so, if they're just off of those two, uh, off of those two streets, then it wouldn't be considered local delivery under this ordinance.
Uh, it, the sign is not that specific, though. It, it doesn't say delivery on Woodbury, it says local delivery. And that's pretty local.
They're not saying I'm going to the end of the street and make a left, two buildings and dropping my load.
That's pretty local.
Pretty close to local, and they're gonna say, I drive this road here, I, in the outer road, run parallel.
I mean, is, is the issue with the sign or the ordinance, I guess that's the?
Yeah.
I've driven trucks, man.
Yeah.
If I'm going down a road and I know this road takes me to the street I'm delivering on, that's local delivery to me.
But knowing what the delivery is, can you have a concession?
No, and that's the problem with that, 'cause if, if the truck was gonna drive up Woodbury, turning down there to get to the outer road, 'cause they thought that was easier, and then go to Cole, that might, that would fall under what I think they're doing here. But when they drive up Woodbury and make a left turn and there's businesses somewhere on Valley Ridge, that's a local delivery, insider community, it's only basically one block or.
Yeah.
If the sign said, um, deliveries only on Woodbury, rather than local delivery, that would be a little bit different. But put that sign up says local delivery, that's pretty local to me.
It, well, I, I mean, you could have it say resi, I mean, on that particular area, if it's only residential, um, that we're concerned with. I mean, it could be residential for, from on Woodbury.
Just put vehicles over five tons prohibited, except for residential deliveries.
Residential deliveries.
Residential deliveries, but my problem is the sign that says local delivery.
So, we need to.
Change it, we, we can change the sign to say vehicles over five tons prohibited except for residential deliveries, right? That's what you did.
If I have a question, why are all those other streets listed on it?
Those have all, those, those have been in there previously.
And then there's signage on each of these streets?
I would imagine so, I, I haven't, I didn't confirm that, no.
It's not a new, the only thing that's being changed on this ordinance is the addition of Woodbury. All the rest would be existing.
I don't think there's any sign on Cannon Street.
I've not, I've not noticed any signs on those other streets.
We can go back and confirm that, 'cause it should have a sign, yes. Every street that's listed on here should have.
Just local delivery, is that what the sign is supposed to say?
Well, it's changing this evening.
Yeah. We remember that.
Well, it, so that means we're gonna have to replace about the sign.
Yes.
Well, I, I remember one, if we're gonna have to replace all of them. Well, I think the local delivery fit in those, because that's all, all in the residential area.
Yeah.
But this here is a residence, I mean, it's a residential street that leads to a, a commercial street.
Right.
Can we, can we do that, Matt, change one sign but not the rest of them? I mean, you're not staying in.
Yeah, I mean, the, the signs are there to just provide people notice of what, of what the laws are. And if we're, you know, that, the sign that we're talking about on Woodbury is just to, to clarify that it's only residential on Woodbury, um, but the other signs, that all these signs don't have to be uniform. We're just trying to inform, um, the people, um, where they can drive these trucks.
See where I'm going with that, 'cause I don't wanna get into this, where do they get a ticket for it? And then, well, this sign says this on this one, this one doesn't say it here, so how can we?
Right, I mean, the ordinance is, is, I mean, the ordinance says what it says and they get a ticket for violating the ordinance. The signs are just trying to inform people of the ordinance. And we're being more specific on Woodbury, just to un, to, to inform them that, you know, this is only residential here, only residential is local here, because the commer, the commercial areas on Woodbury are beyond the boundaries of what's local limits is defined by the ordinance.
I mean, I get what you're saying, I just wanted to make sure we're clarified that we're not gonna run into a problem down the road with one sign saying, one, one saying different.
No, I mean, they're, they're different areas anyway, the, where the signs are gonna be a different area.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first, Mayor. This is Bill B. 14 17, uh, the first read and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to use funds in the tax increment financing TIF reserve fund to pay the debt service on the 2012 tax increment financing TIF bonds and amending the 2014 reserve fund expense budget city fund 301.
I move that we accept item B. 14 dash 17 for its fir, first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman West to approve Bill B. 14 dash 17 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I believe this isn't a surprise to, uh, Board of Aldermen, that there's a ton we needed to and was to pay the initial, uh, TIF funds. Um, I think the bigger question this year is what are we doing as we go forward? And to answer that question, um, I have asked Paul Arino, to be present, to provide an update to the board as to activity in that area. I hope that the development in that area would, uh, um, come sooner than later and, um, in an attempt to bring business so that, uh, it will hold, that TIF project will hold its own. Have any additional comments regarding that?
Uh, not at this time, no.
We expected what, first two years, is that what? 'Cause we've been putting money back. What was our timeframe we were expecting to have the?
Well, you know, we, we knew the first couple of years would be difficult for us at best. I think the concern now is because of the, the lack of development that's occurred there, so how much longer will that be, uh, kind of, fun, hold its own? Um, we're, we're continuing to set the, the money back in reserves, but the hope is that, um, if, through development, additional funds would come in from sales tax and, and, uh, they'll help pay for that. Uh, something that you may recall that we've done in an attempt to set additional dollars back is that all four corners are in the project area for, uh, this TIF contract. And so, even the areas like Advance and McDonald's that are bringing the redeals coming in, we are putting those into the reserve fund to be able to help support that case season now on, online debt to be added as a movie theater. So, um, it, it's steady now and it will be steady for the next year too, but, um, after that, we're, we're concerned about where the additional dollars will come from, without some additional development on all four corners.
So, who?
Paul Arino.
Starting Paul, alright. Give us an update up there?
Sure, Mayor, council members, thank you. Um, but I will let you know is I'm doing everything in my possible means to bring businesses in and, and attract them and show them the area. Um, I do have two realtors on commission, actually have a contract for extra commission. Um, we're, they both can have commission, no matter which one brings it in. So, we're marketing it to the area. Uh, we've had several, um, really we focus, last time I think I met and gave a TIF update, we were really trying to focus on getting some restaurants and fast food establishments in the area. And we've had, um, actually quite a few that have flown in and done some market studies. And one of the biggest hurdles that I'm getting from them or hearing as far as feedback is just the lack of, um, uh, lunch traffic they would have in the business. And when, and basically, you know, as Dairy Queen told me, you know, we go down the road, one exit and we triple our lunch crowd. And those are the kind of responses that I've gotten. Now, really what my focus has been on and, uh, so, you know, we're really trying to focus on finding a second large anchor, um, to go into development. And by having a second anchor in there, we can really attract and try to get some of that lunch, lunch traffic, crowd traffic into the area. Um, we have been, um, actually I think since I've talked to TIF order soon after there, we have been talking with a, a larger anchor that is going, um, is willing to look at the area and they've continued back and forth conversations. We just haven't got to a contractual terms yet. Um, the, the problem is with these larger boxes, you know, before they flop a $21 million building down, um, they're just slow, they're taking their time. Um, we've had one that's done a market study, um, that's looking at the site, um, working with another developer out of North Kansas City area, that's helping me work with them who's built some of these before. Do I have a guarantee we're gonna get there? I don't. Um, but. Um, but, we are definitely putting in front of any possible person that could fit into the Green Valley market. And we're hoping that we'll, by attracting another large anchor there, then we'll have that foot traffic to fill in those, rest of those retail outlets, and hopefully, work on filling in, um, the other four corners as we get another anchor. Um, I will say originally, um, you know, McDonald's, uh, here, originally, we had them ready to sign, had the contract drawn up, and, um, they went on the other side of the, uh, development, and that was more of a decision about what side of the road was gonna be done first, 'cause they were ready to build. Um, even, as fact as O'Reilly and Autozone, that are now in the city, um, we have sent them information, and actually sent them the new road development plans and our realtors. So, we've, we've talked with, and the city's done a lot of this work as well, too, they've been out there contacting and, and contacting these businesses, and we have too. And a lot of that information, my realtors have worked and got these people into the city, looking town, and luckily, some of them have located in the town. Um, so, all I can do is promise you, we're doing our best and working, the properties listed, um, with two realtors, we're, um, cold calling places, um, we're working and trying to make any favorable terms and conditions to try to get that development done, 'cause, trust me, it's my bear's interest as well to get that done, 'cause, you know, the land's sitting there, and it costs money every single day at TIF there, so, out of my pocket, so, we're definitely working, trying to get that done as quick as we can, to comply to entertain any questions.
When you first talked, you talked about the possibility-
Sorry, just a tad louder for me.
Yeah, when you first talked, you talked about the possibility of, uh, um, grocery store, is there, are you still seeking that avenue, or?
Still working, trying to attract the groceries there.
Let me ask you this, and, oh, I don't know how long ago, Alexa and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and we were, I've never really noticed it, probably 'cause I've been here my whole life, and the building's been there my whole life, but the octagonal building there, you know, she's kinda pointed out, you know, that's kind of an eyesore, and I didn't think of it much when you told me, but probably, I don't know, a couple of days ago, my wife and I were coming back from Oak Grove area, and my wife looks over and says, "You guys, you hear of that building over there? That's an eyesore, you need to add some curb appeal to that, to that development over there." I mean, I, I know it doesn't sound like much, but-
Sure.
There's some way that maybe we can clean that up a little bit, maybe you would help the curb appeal out?
Yeah, I actually, uh, met with my bank last week and started that conversation, so they're, they're stirring on that, 'cause obviously, there's, you know, a pretty significant cost in the demolition and, and removing that building, so I can report back to Alexa here and have her report to you here in the next week or two.
'Cause I mean, that may help a little, you know, have all those shows on your house curb appeal, maybe we need to add a little curb appeal to the development, I don't know.
How often are you giving status updates to Ms. Barton?
Um, it, it differs, occasionally, we talk once a week, sometimes, you know, every, every three weeks, um, just kinda depends on how busy things are for both of us, you know, um, we have each other's cell phone numbers, um, definitely, if I, anything comes up on my end, I, um, give her a call freely, and she's, she knows she can give me a call freely at any time. Um, so, um, I'm usually in town once a week, um, so I'm down here trying to meet with any potential people, and, uh, do some things at the movie theater, and things along that line, so, um, open and available. Um, the last few weeks have been rather busy in my life, just, um, kids going off to college, one getting married, and so, I, the last three weeks, I haven't been a little bit tied up on things, so I'd probably over an update, but-
Are you, are you comfortable with the, with my information you're getting, and?
You know, um, Paul is, is responsive to the request, uh, and that's just a part of that economic development experience, trying to get somebody to come and take a look at your property. Not, uh, not knowing exactly everything that's going on in that arena, other than what, you know that I know, I don't know something new here recently, so, probably some additional information, if you want.
And I'll, I'll be glad to get with Alexa, and like I said, I'm down once a week, so I can, we can start scheduling regular meetings and there's some phone call conversations, so. I know you just got through budget time, and that was tough, so.
Is there anything that we can do, uh, call a particular entity that you're talking to, and, and tell them as an Alexa official, we'd really be interested in coming to Green Valley?
Um, I appreciate that offer, and I, I will say, Alexa's been very responsive, anytime we've had, um, anybody that would have an interest in speaking with the city, and, um, I definitely, if that would be helpful, if I hear that from, uh, a certain client that's coming in town, I'll definitely get ahold of Alexa, and she could probably make the appropriate contact with you. Generally, it's, getting them in town i- is one thing, but it really comes down, and nowadays, it really comes down to the market studies and the, the foot traffic they can generate. And we're, we're still kind of coming out with this recession, we're kinda hanging or lingering around, and, you know, the, I'm seeing activity pick up, I mean, in Springfield area, we finally have seen some fast food and some restaurants have started pickup. In fact, one of the other developments, we just put two lots under contract, we're getting ready to, got some LOIs on them, and they sat there for three years with that one, so we're starting to see some activity pick up on my end, and I'm starting to see other things kinda go, it's just, there's, there's a lot of options, and there, everybody's very cautious as they're going forward. Um, I mean, I think you even heard, like, Garden Restaurants recently, they sold off the Red Lobster chain, and they used to have a hundred something realtors, and my understanding is only have about three or four now that work internally in their department, 'cause they're just so selective on their sites, and we're just, there's just a lot of opportunities for them to choose where to go, so. What we gotta do is, is show them everything Green Valley has to offer, from, you know, wonderful community, to thirteen thousand residents that, you know, need the services, um, for a town this size, there's a lot of services aren't here, and that's why we started this project, and worked on this project, and, um, this town has a lot to offer, proximity close to Kansas City, but still has that small town, um, everything feel about it, and, um, the more, I think we get them out here, and I think the more they start looking, um, the better opportunity we have. And the fact is, you know, we're still a filler community, so new businesses coming in, they're gonna locate in other locations, and, 'cause I've heard this term a lot, then we start looking for the little outskirts areas that we wanna fill in. And, so, we, we kinda fight some of those demographic issues, I, I think it's a lot of it, as we go forward, but I don't wanna be a pessimist, you know, I'm very optimistic that, um, you know, we're, we're gonna get something moving forward, hopefully sooner than later. Um, we've got great, great offers, um, out there to some potential people, and we're, you know, willing to do what we need to do to, um, get these buildings in there, so.
When you say great offers, um, example, I mean, the big chain restaurants, do, do we have any, anybody from, uh, just hanging off, like, an Applebee's, I know Applebee's sets up the road, but like, Fifty-four Street, Applebee's, you know, um, Red Lobster, has any, the big chains even shown any interest at all?
Um, we've sent information to just about every large chain, even to regional chains, or, which I guess Pizza Ranch, and, you know, various things like that, and really, really what's really hurting is that lunch crowd traffic. Um, you know, we'll, we'll kinda get some back and forth, you know, it, you know, we'll kinda put it in our files, we'll, you know, next time we're in Kansas City, we'll look. Um, we've had some that come out and actually done some studies, and, you know, their studies kinda lead them more, you know, in, towards the Blue Springs and the Pennants area.
You got Texas Roadhouse up there, doesn't open till four o'clock, and you gotta wait in line to get in there after four o'clock.
Correct.
So, I'm having a hard time with all the demographics.
Well, and, and really, I guess, as you look at, you know, Texas Roadhouse is an exception, is they're mainly dinner business, and, you know, even Olive Garden depends on lunch crowd. And I'm just reporting to you what I hear, you know, I'm not up here making stuff up, this is just what I'm getting the feedback from.
Well, I understand, I mean, uh, we got people we have to answer to, so I, I need to ask these questions, so I, I get-
Yeah, I just wanna say where I'm, I'm coming from, um, but to, um, I guess, I guess specifically is, a lot of those restaurants, as you mentioned, Texas Roadhouse, you know, they, they really only locate in front of large box, boxes, because they depend on the other traffic from the synergy from those large boxes. And, um, we're just not gonna get a Red Lobster sitting in front of the movie theater, or, or, or Long John's, I mean, it's, or, or not a Long John's, a, uh, Lone Star, or those type of restaurants, because their demographic won't allow them to locate there. You know, they've done their studies, they have restaurants, they have to see if they have failed, um, you know, until there is, you know, some other large activity there, that type of restaurant would be hard to get, I mean, just being straight honest. That would be very difficult.
Are you getting any assistance from our, um, soul, Greg Martin?
Um, both of my realtors, um, have been in contact with him, tend to get some information as far as demographics, and, um, he's actually called a couple of leads into my realtors, and they've followed up on that, so. You know, occasionally, I, you know, I can't say he's knocking down my door, we're knocking down his door, but, you know, occasionally, we do get the information from him, and he's been helpful, you know, every time we've called on him to do that, so.
Any questions for Mr. Stariter? Thank you.
If you've got any question ever, feel free, Alexa has my number, feel free to call me, um, you know, anytime, it'll be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
I did also ask Jill Lohr, our TIF attorney, um, an economic development attorney, to, uh, take a look at the contract, so, did you have any comments for the board this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good to see you again. Um, I did, uh, as, as Alexa mentioned, I, I did take a look at the, uh, the agreement, uh, you know, some of the questions were, you know, what are the, the timeframes we're, we're looking at to, to move the development forward. Um, and so, I, I did provide for you in your packet, kind of an update as to, you know, what, what discussions were had, basically, as this, this project were coming through, as far as what was to be built, and what the goals were for, uh, for getting, uh, these things done, and in what kinda timeframe. Uh, you may recall that, um, that when the, uh, the development itself was approved, uh, we had kind of the, the big question mark of, of the timing of the MoDOT improvements, uh, when would that all occur? And so, one of the items, uh, that was put in the, uh, TIF contract, that was identified, you know, through this review, is the fact that, um, we need to go back and actually put a redevelopment schedule, a hard schedule now, into that TIF contract. Uh, that doesn't exist at this point, uh, because it, at that time, it was, it was very uncertain as to the, uh, the MoDOT improvements. So, now that the MoDOT improvements are done, uh, one of the things that I've talked with, uh, Alexa about is the fact that we do need to, uh, reach out to Mr. Arino, and begin the process of nailing down a hard development schedule, so that you can have some hard dates that you can be looking at as, as things progress, uh, with this. And so, I spoke with Mr. Arino prior to the meeting, and we're gonna, we're gonna step outside, uh, once we're done here this evening, and start that process of getting that lined up, and would like to have an amendment, uh, that would have this, it's called a superseding addendum, it's, it's an addition to the TIF contract that will lay out this, uh, this schedule, so, uh, I'll be bringing that forward to you. I'm also happy to answer any other questions that you may have, uh, about, um, the TIF, or anything like that.
Anyone have any questions? Alright. Anyone have, have any discussion or questions?
If nothing happens again, next year, we'll be going through the same process, right? We'll have to take money out of the reserve to pay the next payment again.
Yes, to answer your question, at this point in time, the, uh, the development is underperforming, uh, in, in terms of being able to pay the debt service. And one thing that we have to keep in mind is that debt service is gonna escalate as time goes on. Uh, so it's designed, you know, to allow some ramp up for the, for the project. So, at this point, you know, um, every day, we're gonna start getting a little further and further behind the ball, uh, on, on this. And so, it is imperative that, that Mr. Arino gets moving and gets some development done, you know, we've kinda kept up on our end of the bargain. Uh, our end of the bargain was that if the debt service falls short, we put an annual appropriation pledge, exactly what you're doing this evening, is you're saying, to the extent that that debt service is, is lagging, we're gonna cover that cost out of, out of, uh, the city's general fund. And we haven't had to do that to this point, because as Ms. Barton was, uh, pointing out, that so far, we've had some revenues that have come in from other places, and we've actually been able to keep a, a reserve fund, kind of a rainy day fund, just in case. And so, um, that fund has been filling up, and that's where you're utilizing the, the monies that you're gonna be covering the debt service from at this point, so we're not actually touching the, uh, the, uh, your actual, uh, general fund. But it's, it's one of those things that kinda reminds us, hey, this thing is lagging at this point, we don't see the development that we were promised at the time, it's time to get that moving, because there's only so many, it's a finite amount of funds in that. And, you know, it'll, it'll fill up during the year, and then we'll empty it out when we have to do something like this, but it, you know, that process is gonna, you know, it's gonna start being more and more, uh, each year.
So, I guess, the next question is, how long do we hang on to the way we're running it now? Do we, and what I'm trying to say is, do we stay with Mr. Arino? How long do we do that? How long do we, do we risk taxpayers' money?
Well, um, we're in it for the long haul with what we promised, but, you know, the question is, um, you know, in part, is answered by, you know, what we end up putting in that redevelopment schedule to nail down a date for this to be done, but, you know, quite frankly, unless you know of a developer that's gonna come along and, and do it faster than he is, you know, at this point-
Say the course.
This is, this is the date that we brought to the dance, um, so, you know, this is where we are right now.
Say the course, where we're on, is your recommendation?
It, it is what we've agreed to do at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Alright, thank you.
If there's nothing else then, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
It's your first mayor. That's, that's all the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
I move on to resolutions, yes, resolution R fourteen dash thirty-seven. Resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Grand Valley, authorizing the city administrator to utilize Jackson County's two thousand fourteen pavement maintenance contracts of the City of Grand Valley's two thousand fourteen street maintenance program.
I move that we accept resolution R one four dash three seven.
I have motion, Alvin Skollet, Skollet to approve resolution R fourteen dash thirty-seven, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Headley, any discussion? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
It's your mayor. This is resolution R fourteen dash thirty-eight, the resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a one-year extension agreement with throughout Lehman Company for audit services.
I move that we accept resolution R fourteen dash thirty-eight.
I have motion, Alvin West, to approve resolution R fourteen dash thirty-eight, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alvin Arnold, any discussion?
Whether prices comparable to past.
I think, you know, like, there are five thousand dollars more than last year. And our revision in the bid, they extended for a one-year increments for up to five years. And it's just a little more efficient to go ahead and extend it and start over and train a new auditor for, if they weren't too much, what they did.
Anyone have anything else? Seeing none, non-fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
It's your mayor.
Next item, the city attorney's report?
Their report.
Next item, the city administrator and staff report?
Yeah, please, you guys are reporting.
And Mayor Board, I just wanna give a final, uh, update on our national night out last week, it was an unbelievable success, as always, like, you know, give it to, uh, staff, um, for putting together an excellent program, our, all of our volunteers from our VITS, our explorers, and everybody else that volunteered their time, such as Alderman Johnson. I'm not sure how to get a count on how many hot dogs you actually cooked this year, do you know?
We did about six hundred.
About six hundred. And on our sign-in sheets, we had close to, just under, under five hundred, and I know we had a lot of people that bypassed those as well. So, I think we had anywhere in the neighborhood of about five hundred, a little over, um, at one point during that. You know, we had the, uh, Jackson County Sheriff's Department, we had CJC Fire, um, our canine demonstration, uh, brought out Lee Summit, as well as County, uh, Jackson County, and Cass County was there, and then we had the Lee Summit, um, Bomb Squad, I think that was kind of a big hit, blowing up a couple of watermelons, I think everybody enjoyed that, it was pretty cool. Um, I'm sure I'm leaving out several things, we had a lot of other vendors there, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody that, um, volunteered their time and, and did an excellent job. I know we had raffles that started from the minute we started the event, at, um, six o'clock or whatever, and went till eight-thirty, and they were still going to about a quarter to nine, just trying to raffle things off, so we had excellent donations and, and everything, so. It's just, everything went off without a hitch, and, you know, again, thank local vendors, Patricia's, uh, donated quite a bit of things for us, I mean, these, a lot of people did, so. I'm sure I'm leaving a lot out, I could go on and on and on, but I think everybody had an excellent time.
I'll follow you.
Uh, just a few things, uh, on the Parks and Recreation side, we had our, uh, fourteen annual P P D softball tournament this past Saturday out in Mountain Park. We had seven teams, a little down from last year, we had, we had ten teams, but, uh, the weather corroborated, we had a great tournament. Uh, this is a town with all sorts of concession stands, the revenue from, uh, concession sales goes- This is town ball, so we're in the concession stands, so revenue from concession stands goes to them as well. I know OI, they had a team, they always have a team in the, in the tournament, I think they were actually one of the last three stands in the tournament. One game away from the championship game. The city have a team as well, we actually have a game this year.
They actually beat the Lakers.
But all in all, it was, it was a great tournament. Today was the registration deadline for the fall youth baseball and softball. We had a pretty good turnout, we're sitting around, a little under a hundred and fifty kids, all season, which was pretty good. Again, a lot smaller than the spring-summer season and beaten with other sports like football and soccer this time of year. We're looking at having our coaches' meetings this week and looking at practices starting up next week for, for the fall season. And other than that, I think that's all I have.
Last item that we have for today is to just talk about the state of the city, Mayor, I thought you did a great job. I received a lot of compliments on the information that was within the state of the city and kudos to staff for bringing it together.
Next up is Board of Aldermen reports and comments, Alvin Arnold.
I just wanted to compliment Mr. Shannon for your work on the youth league. I've had a couple people tell me they've talked with you and very informed me, you've been very forthcoming with information for them, so keep the good work.
Alvin West? Alvin Headley?
Just one thing, I traded emails with Ryan and Chief today concerning, I think her name's Ms. Over turf, upon long drive. Is there, is there a schedule, Chief, that you send the cars up or send the traffic officer up or?
Yeah, it's just random, but that works to push out her to start to focus in that area as well. I shouldn't have also, but it's everybody, or if there is.
And I, I'd like to have other, you know, maybe some other discussions, Ryan, concerning, you know, the HOA's offer to buy more speed bumps or speed umps or whatever you call them. And I understand all the things Rick laid it out really well, but I think maybe it's something we should look at if they're willing to help pony up some of the money.
Yeah, look into it, area and cook about how we can structure that as well.
Alvin Scully?
I've been involved in this conversation too, so, we're working on it. Thank you.
Alvin Schaefer?
A while back, I asked Alexa to bring, bring the savings to the board on four-year terms. I'd just like to get the feedback from the board if the board liked to see that brought, brought to us from the staff, direct staff and to put it together and bring it to us and start making it happen instead of two-year terms, go to four-year terms. As Alexa officials with a savings of eight to ten thousand dollars of the elections.
How, how would that work if we passed that so the ones that are up next year would run for a four-year term?
It has to go to a vote, doesn't it?
Yeah, it has to go to a vote, so what you would be instructing staff to do is to draft language to bring to you and ordinance to put it on the available election to consider going from a two-year to four-year term. And that email that I sent to all of you, I just used a local city, which was Sugar Creek, they utilized that language. Passed pretty well in Sugar Creek, you go for two-year and four-year, it's just pretty basic information. Other than for some of the terms you had to explain and I tried to put that into that email about how you would explain depending on when it goes before the people, how it would elect, how it would affect future elections. Depending on, I think we're, like, for another election, I think it's the deadline in August. Yeah, the deadline being in August. So you'd have to, yeah.
I'd say you're looking at April probably.
You're probably more looking at next spring, putting on ballot.
I'd be curious to see what surrounding cities are doing, how many them are two-year or four-year.
Another thing that you want to do is you want to consider when you put it on the ballot. Because you're gonna want to make sure there's other things on the ballot, so, because if we are the only one that has something on there, it's very expensive. So you want to take a look at when other things will be on the ballot so you're sharing that cost of election with another entity. So February typically sometimes isn't a good time, April, we already have something on the ballot, so you might want to put it on the ballot at that time. So that gives you time to take a look at that information that Alderman Johnson asked for.
I would think if we're looking at doing something like that, we need to look at the possibility of also having term limits.
Can we do that, Matt?
Yes.
Term limit?
Yes.
And the other downside I can see to it is a longer-term commitment might limit people that would be interested in running. So it's a lot easier to sign up for a two-year commitment than it is for a four-year commitment. And I know with fire districts where they have six-year commitments, sometimes it's very difficult to find people to fulfill on those positions. So it's also something you want to consider there, you don't, you don't want to have elections if nobody signs up because they don't want to do a four-year term and then the mayor has to appoint somebody or have, you know, mid-term or until the next election. So it's, it's something you definitely need to consider before we move into this, I know it's a savings, but.
What, what did the last election cost us? The one we just had?
It cost us about ninety-eight hundred dollars.
So it'd be a savings, it's a very good year.
We didn't have anything on the agenda.
We had the, the general and the school election. The last time we had a special election or special item on the agenda, it cost us around fifteen thousand. And that was two thousand and ten, or eleven, but it was during a general election.
That cost goes down whenever there's multiple entities with items on the election, so it doesn't always cost us the nine, ninety-eight hundred.
Typically ninety, around nine thousand is about your minimum.
That's probably about the standard for April because it's usually up in the school district.
So every, every other year, savings to, to the homeowners or voters would be nine to ten thousand dollars on the average. They're not running a election every year, yeah.
So about half a, half a cent if you do it each year.
Unless there's something else on the ballot, unless, unless there's another city issue on ballot of taxes here or something like that.
Do we have any control over how many polling places they have? I mean, some of these polling places, you sit there all day and there's, you know, two or three people an hour and they have, you know, you know, the church down there gets very few. I mean, if they consolidate, it'd reduce costs.
Why would we want to do that?
Pardon?
Why would we want to reduce costs?
Well, I mean, that, that would help reduce it, save, be as easy as even in the election, reduce it.
So what direction do we need to go now with, do we take a, a vote to see how, if we want to?
Sponsor yourself and put up for, I mean, go to the board, doesn't mean you'll pass, you'll get a second, but you can always.
Direct sta, I mean, you can direct staff and put it on.
They just need somebody to introduce it, doesn't mean you look at second or pass though, which is how you want to do it.
I don't want to waste staff's time, I mean, it's something the board's interested in doing.
Sounds like the board's kind of wanting some more information, I think.
Actually, yes, I think we do need more information before we put this on.
So what I'm hearing is other communities?
Yeah, we want to do what other cities are doing.
With that, term limit also of other cities?
Is there any other questions that you have? Or any research for you?
Maybe just do a hypothetical, what the average savings would have been looking back five years or ten years maybe.
I can give you some historical data as to what our election cost.
Like, this last election, we had two people run opposed and, you know, spent a chunk of money for it.
And to Alderman Johnson's point, I mean, is there any way to talk to the Board of Elections and say, you know, do it all at the community center?
Um, we could, if, if you might ask your mayor to draft a letter to them and coming from another criminal elected official to, that the board would like it reviewed.
They would look at if that I could do that?
Alright, yeah, we'll do that. Probably get shredded if they get it, but we'll do it.
Is there any suggestions you would have Alexa?
At least get board's three, two votes at the same place.
Same place, yeah.
And what would probably be helpful is I'll bring additional information as to, you know, what some of that sample information, uh, violent language could look like along with what would be a recommended timeframe to put it on, when you would need a, prove that ordinance, put that language on. Would the rec, would the current recommendation that you would like to do it for April's ballot, because you already got something on, on that ballot at that time. And that way, it doesn't cost you, there's not additional cost to be done. Does that, does that make sense?
Where would these supposed savings be earmarked for?
Well, it, it's a cost for it, comes from the general fund, so you would have additional funding in your general fund. You could utilize more other items.
I, I just think that there are questions that need to be answered.
Alright, we'll compile that and I'll get the rest hung off. Anything else, Alvin Schaefer?
Not this time, Mayor.
Alvin Johnson?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Park Board, Shannon and Mike Myers on, on the work they did. I thought they did a great job putting that, that tournament together with a short number of teams. And I think everybody out there, all the other teams and stuff, I thought they had a good time.
Next item is mayor's report. I just want to thank everyone who helped with the state of city and I'll even thank the chamber, but he's probably not gonna pay this dude back there for putting that on for us and getting that together. Uh, and I don't have anything else, do we have a need for an executive session?
No, but would you like to talk about what's going on happening next Tuesday?
Everyone in front of you should have, let me call it golden rod, I don't know what we're gonna call that. This is invitation for Mr. Lucko's reception we're holding here at the community center, right, community center.
There's probably a change of location, it'll be a reminder tomorrow and next Tuesday, a week ahead of time, that that location did change from this location to community center.
And also just, you know, he's not here, so we can say this, I don't know if he watches the news or not, but we will, we are gonna surprise him with, I believe, what will be the first ever key to the city going out that evening, so.
Pass out a bag now.
I know, I think it's the first, I mean, I don't know. So we're gonna honor him with that as well that evening, so. That's all I have.
I do have one more item related to that. And that is to the Truman Heartland Foundation's toast to the town, the event at night is Saturday, September sixth. The city is getting a table for the aldermen and for staff, however, if your spouse is attending, that's an additional hundred and eighty dollars. So I need to find out from you in advance if, if your spouse or significant other is attending with you. So that I, we can do table count accordingly.
Didn't we already respond to that?
There was some question whether, what the exact cost of the ticket was, how much of the cost of the table was. The cost for the tables went up this year and the cost for ticket went up this year, so, once we found that out, that's why I'm coming back to you today, that the cost for the ticket's a hundred and eighty dollars for a guest. So versus the hundred and sixty, I believe that it was last year. So I just wanted everybody to know and get confirmation from everybody. Just be on the safe side. And that's all I have.
No need for an executive session? Alright, unless someone has anything else, we will adjourn. Alright, we'll adjourn.